The Rutherford County Board of Commissioners tonight, welcome. And tonight, there is Commissioner Turner will lead us in prayer and then Commissioner Cook will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, thank you again, Lord, for another wonderful day and thank you for the blessings that you've given each and every one of us. We, Lord, are thankful for being able to celebrate the recent Veterans Day, Lord, and those who died protecting our country and those who have been wounded and are currently serving overseas, Lord. I ask that you just protect them, Lord, and keep your shield around them and their families here at home, Lord. And we're thankful, Lord, that we live in a country that had free elections last week and we ask that you be with our leaders, Lord, not only locally but at the federal level, that they just seek your will, Lord, and that they seek your guidance and your wisdom. Bless all those, Lord, who are here this evening and those who are watching at home. I ask this in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Coggan.
President.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Soreno. 21 present.
Thank you very much. Now, before you copy of the minutes of the previous meeting, do we have a motion? Commissioner Phillips.
Mayor Burgess, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them in order and move for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Jernigan. Did anyone have any additions or corrections? There being none, all of you in favor of that, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now, we'll have a resolution of sympathy on behalf of a wonderful lady, Ms. Catherine McCroskey, by Commissioner McAdoo.
Before I read this resolution of sympathy, I got to recognize Commissioner Robert P., Commissioner Joe Frank Jernigan, and our mayor, Ernest Burgess. And the reason I say that, we, several years ago, we undertook a big project, per se, the first one that the county ever taken in the path of widening Halls Hill Pike. And did a wonderful job, per se, came in under budget and by far the sidewalks are being used by several, several, several people, especially MTSU campus. And the one that really spearheaded this was Ms. McCroskey. I think we've met constantly for several years out there at the tabernacle. And like I said, we all attended and she stayed on it. Now, this project started, say, for example, 20 years ago. And this shallow community with her leadership didn't stop until it was completed. Resolution of sympathy. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learn of the death of Catherine Louise Wade McCroskey, a friend of many. And whereas Ms. McCroskey is survived by her husband of 53 years, Aaron McCroskey Senior, four children, Deborah, Donnie, Linda Wade, Douglas, LeBron McCroskey, Bishop Aaron Denise McCroskey Jr., and Felicia George Wade, and nine grandchildren. And whereas Ms. McCroskey was a member of Warner Grove Missionary Baptist Church and was the pianist and Sunday School teacher for New Bethel A&amp;M, AME Church. And whereas she was a dedicated community worker for many years and was instrumental in helping to develop a safer environment in her community with the widening of the road and additional, and addition of sidewalks to Halls Hill Pike. And whereas Ms. McCroskey was a 43-year employee of the Boulevard Terrace Nursing Home with lots of awards as a result of being a manager of environmental services. And whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends, now therefore be resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 15th day of November 2012 does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Ms. Catherine McCroskey and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Ms. McCroskey by the clerk of this legislative body and I so move.
Second, Mayor Commissioner P. and others, I'm sure, all of you in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Well, that's a resounding unanimous and we do all appreciate her and thank her for all of her great support of our whole county. Next, we have Commissioner Tiffany Phillips, which will have a resolution recognizing GIS, Government, Not Government Geographic Information Systems Day. Ms. Phillips.
Mrs. Barbara Marlin and her staff over in the GIS department, I mean, in the, in our, I'm sorry, what's the?
OIT.
OIT, my brain's gone crazy. And the OIT department has worked really, really hard on setting up this GIS Day and we would just like to recognize her and the department for that. They will be presenting a presentation at Segal High School tomorrow. Mayor Burgess will be reading this resolution as well in the morning. Whereas Geography Awareness Week is November 12th through 16th, and whereas National Geographic Information System, GIS Day, is November 16th, 2012, and whereas Geography Awareness Week promotes GIS and geographic literacy in schools, and whereas GIS is an important part of geography awareness, and whereas Rutherford County and its partners are committed to expanding GIS to the schools and general public in order to showcase real-world applications with GIS. Now therefore, I, Ernest G. Burgess, Rutherford County Mayor, for and on behalf of the Rutherford County Government, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2012, as National GIS Day and urge all citizens to participate in GIS Day activities. Mr. Mayor, I so move.
And a second from Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor of that, then please say aye. Aye. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Okay, now we are ready for public comments. And tonight, we have three people that will speak to you. And let me see, the first person will be Ms. Michelle Willard regarding Read to Succeed.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, for allowing me this time today. My name's Michelle Willard. I'm editor of the Murfreesboro Post. And I'm here today on the behalf of Read to Succeed, which promotes literacy in Rutherford County. And I know some of you have heard of Read to Succeed and even participated in some of its programs, like Reading in the Schools Today, the Reading Rally, Unplug and Read, and even the Celebrity Spelling Bee, which was held earlier this week. But tonight, I'm here to bring your attention to this year's One Book Community Read Program. Each year, we join with community partners, Lineby Library, the Community Anti-Drug Coalition, United Way, Ingram Content Group, MTSU, and media outlets such as the Daily News Journal, the Murfreesboro Post, and the Murfreesboro Pulse, in asking adults in Rutherford County to all read the same book. This year's title is The Fault in Our Stars, a New York Times Bestseller by John Green, and not the John Green from Rutherford County. The Fault in Our Stars is an affecting novel that tackles big subjects like life, love, and death with raw honesty that makes an enlightening read. The book centers on the story of 16-year-old Hazel, who's dealing with terminal cancer when she meets another cancer-affected teen in a support group. And I'll let you guys read it to find out what happens. With those themes in mind, the One Book Committee has partnered with Clinton's Club, an umbrella organization that unifies efforts to raise awareness of childhood cancer and provide support for families with affected members. We are also honored to partner with the group Liv Forte and the family of Taylor Filarimo, the 16-year-old Riverdale High School student who died in September from cancer, and to bring more awareness to the issue of childhood cancer. Our selection committee felt that this book was a powerful way to recognize these families and what they do for our community. I have brought a copy of this book to give to the county commission. We ask that one of you take it, read it, and write a comment in the front or back cover and then pass it on to a fellow commissioner. So, who wants it? Thank you, and I hope you all have a chance to read the book and enjoy it.
Thank you, Ms. Willard. Now, next, we have Mr. Donald Todd.
My name is Donald Todd and I live at 633 Buck Lane. Abolish Metro-type rules to prevent tax increases. It is obvious that every state in our country is suffering from a huge financial crisis which can be traced back to at least the 1970s. For example, in 1971, the county judge of Dallas County, Texas, Lou Sterrett, wrote a letter of warning to many elected officials in the county and state governments of Texas. The subject of his letter was metro government policies. In one of his remarks, he considered federal government policy as being synonymous with metro policy. For example, he said, quote, "We all know that the federal government is bankrupting every large metropolitan area in America," unquote. Please read an Associated Press article published in the Daily News Journal on March 10th, 2011. It is entitled, quote, "Untapped Reserves or Unspent Surplus Revenue Hard to Access in Some States," unquote. Obviously referring to Metro-type rules as a source of the financial crisis in America, the writer remarked, quote, "Amid the worst financial crisis facing the states in decades, stringent rules governing the use of reserve funds have tied the hands of lawmakers in nearly a dozen states, even as they consider raising taxes, slashing services, and reducing education programs," unquote. When you analyze this article, it appears that socialistic metro agents have used their power to urge state legislators to adopt stringent rules, forcing the county not to recycle their surplus revenue to the next fiscal year's budget, and therefore the surplus cannot remain in the same county fund from which the surplus originated. Counties and states are often urged to implement illegal metro laws by which these governments are forced to over-appropriate to certain funds and then to overspend with an over-appropriation in one or two funds with the required policy for investing surplus revenue in purchasing CDs or in making deposits in savings accounts. The county may not have enough money to appropriate to one or two other funds in the next fiscal year. And so when a shortfall occurs, the county or city government has a perfect excuse to call for a tax increase. We are scheduled to meet with a local state senator and plans will be recommended to repeal those laws which transfer control of surplus revenue from the county to the banks and which prevent recycling of large surpluses. New laws replacing Metro-type laws would legalize the recycling of surpluses and therefore taxes would be reduced. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, Susan Allen.
I'm happy to be here, happy to see you all. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Stones River Crafts Association to invite you all to the 19th Annual Studio Tour, Art Studio Tour, that starts tomorrow and goes Saturday and Sunday. I've given you all a brochure and a map. And this year, we have eight studio locations with a total of about 33 artists participating. And if you come, you'll be able to see the artists demonstrating their crafts. We'll give, some of us will be giving tours of the studios. And an added bonus is that at each studio, you can register for our door prizes. We're giving away a lot of art this weekend and you'll be eligible for our grand prize of breakfast for six out at the Reedyville Mill. So, you can see art and you can maybe get some good free gifts. This year, we have two new studios on the tour and you may have seen the article in today's Rutherford Weekend about Eva Berg. She's in Christiana and Joe Frank Jernigan's district. And when I first met Eva, I was just overwhelmed at the amount of work that goes into her fiber wearables that start with her alpaca and goats. She does everything from shearing the animals to the final products. And it's certainly a wonderful opportunity to see what goes into that craft. Also, in Commissioner Young's district, Elizabeth Bray is new on the studio this year. She's located, she has her jewelry and her studio is on downtown on Main Street. And our studio, my husband's and my studio, Popcorn Studio Pottery, we're in Commissioner Ely's district. And we have guest artists at our studio from Commissioner Jordan's district, Commissioner Black's district, and also Commissioner Young's district. So, come and see your constituents. And we hope you'll be able to come and, you know, see what's going on in Rutherford County in the arts and maybe start your holiday shopping. One thing you'll know is if you buy these crafts, they're made in Rutherford County and will keep the dollars circulating in Rutherford County. So, there's nothing like buying local. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next, elections and confirmations and Commissioner Gooch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners. Steering has several items for your consideration this evening. First, on your desk, you will find a copy of the notary candidates and I will move for their election.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Second, we need to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board. We need to announce three vacancies on the Agricultural Advisory Board. We need to announce a vacancy on the Community Care Board and to announce a coroner vacancy. Six, we need to fill vacancies, a vacancy on the Code Enforcement Adjustment and Appeals Board. Steering nominates Mr. James Avery Water.
And do we have a second? Commissioner Coggan? Any discussion? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Next, we need to fill two alternate vacancies on the Beer Board. The situation is on the steering minutes or the agenda, it was asking for one nominee. However, it should have said two. So, steering, we had two applicants, Mr. Jimmy Richardson and Mrs. Cheryl Nelson. Steering nominates Mr. Jimmy Richardson for the term to expire on October 2014. Nominate Mrs. Cheryl Nelson for her term to expire on October 2013. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There, Phillips and others. All right, so you have two people that have been nominated to fill those two alternate vacancies. Any other discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? That is unanimous. Thank you.
We need to fill two vacancies on the Insurance Committee and these are citizen positions. Steering nominates Mrs. Donna Andrews and Mr. Greg Hall. I so move, Mr. Chair.
And a second from Mr. Coggan again. Any discussion? All in favor, then please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
And finally, we need to confirm an appointment of Mrs. Rosemary Owens to the Consolidated Utility District. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Second, it doesn't require, so we're advised.
Okay.
So, with that said, we have confirmed the appointment of Ms. Owens to the Consolidated District Board. Okay. There is no unfinished business that we have noted. So, we have about eight minutes before we have the public hearings. There is not a report from the Purchasing Committee. So, Ms. Ely, we'll see what you can do in eight minutes. Might finish.
Item L-2A, the General Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. First, a transfers in restricted for capital projects. This is closing a project, the Sheriff Dispatch Office, and returning the funding back to the development tax. Increased revenue, $2,591. Increased restricted for capital projects, $2,591. From the Election Commission, several employees had reached the maximum compensatory time and overtime must be paid. So, from undesignated fund balance, $7,827 to overtime pay, $6,500 and the related benefits. From juvenile detention, this is a federal grant, increased revenue, a Title I grants to local education agencies, $110,902. Increased expenditures, other salaries and wages, $25,820 and the related benefits. Also, maintenance and repair of equipment, $3,000. Other contracted service, $1,950. Instructional supplies and materials, $33,999. Other supplies and materials, $30,950. And other charges, $10,213. From pet adoption and welfare services, from paws restricted for public health and welfare, $35,000. To data processing equipment for a computer and printer, $2,500. And other equipment, this is for an adoption rescue trailer, $32,500. Increased revenue from contributions, $70,030. This is a Pets Smart Charities Grant. Increased expenditures, part-time personnel, $10,218 and related benefits. Advertisement, $1,500. Drugs and medical supplies, $57,530. Increased revenue, other state grants from an animal friendly grant, $3,975. Increased expenditures, veterinary services, $3,975 to be used for a space station in Lebanon. From the Sheriff's Department and jail, increased revenue, contributions from the Cold Case Conference, $20,450. Increased expenditure going to the sheriff in service training, $20,450. Increased revenue of sale of materials, $1,029. Increased expenditures for sheriff office supplies, $745. And sheriff other contracted services, $284. Increased revenue from sale of recycled materials, $6,310. Increased expenditures, the sheriff's motor vehicles, $6,147. And jail maintenance and repair of buildings, $163. Increased revenue from insurance recovery, $28,119. Increased expenditure for sheriff's motor vehicles, $28,119. Increased revenue, other federal through state, $74,942. This is a grant through the Governor's Highway Safety Office. Increased expenditure, sheriff overtime pay, $26,654 and the related benefits. Sheriff law enforcement supplies, $1,650. Sheriff law enforcement equipment, $9,250. Sheriff data processing equipment, $29,780. Sheriff vehicle parts, $2,200. And from jail, building improvements, $26,100 going to the sheriff, data processing services, Increased revenue from contribution and gifts, $1,648. Increased expenditures, sheriff other contracted services, $998. Sheriff other supplies and materials, $50. Other charges, $500. And jail other supplies and materials, $100. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Ms. Cook, second. Any discussion or questions? All right, then, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one no. Motion passes.
Item L-2B, a special purpose fund budget amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose DEA fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Department, from restricted for public safety, $40,000. To confidential enforcement, $15,000. Motor vehicles, $25,000. Increased revenue, asset forfeiture funds, $395. Increased expenditures in service training, $395. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Mr. Soreno. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, one abstaining. Motion passes.
Item L-2C, a resolution authorizing designation of petty cash custodian for the Planning Department. Whereas $100 is the current petty cash, cash on hand, that has been assigned to the Planning Department and the petty cash custodian for the Planning Department is designated as John Davis. And whereas it is being proposed that Terry Bradford be designated as the petty cash custodian for the Planning Department effective upon adoption of this resolution. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Mr. Schaefer and others? Any discussion? All of you in favor of this, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, that was a good job, Ms. Ely. And we're within a minute or so of 6:30, so we'll go ahead and start the public hearings. And the first is a rezoning request, number 12-A011. And it's for a spring house development located on Franklin Road and the existing zoning is R-15. And the requested zoning is a planned unit development on a site of approximately 75 acres. So, you may explain further, Mr. Demosi.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Burgess, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the commission. This application, as you stated, is located along Franklin Road. The applicant's proposing to develop a planned residential development called Nature Walk Subdivision. The concept plan, that you should have a copy of in your agenda materials, calls for 165 new single-family residential lots on about 75 acres with 26 of those acres set aside for open space. This acreage was recent, was previously approved, excuse me, as part of the spring house subdivision. And this new proposal will increase the total number of lots by 29. The remainder of this property, which is approximately 129 acres, will continue to be developed as part of the spring house subdivision. The proposed lots are to be a minimum of 7800 square feet in size. Setbacks will be 25-foot front, 20-foot on the rear, five feet on the sides with a minimum of 15 feet between structures. They're also proposing maximum lot coverage of 35 percent. Houses will be a minimum of 1800 square feet and will be 35 percent brick or masonry product material. Development will also have underground utilities, uniform mailboxes, concrete driveways, curb and gutters along the streets. The surrounding area zoned R-15 contains many existing subdivisions, including The surrounding area, Zoned R-15, contains many existing subdivisions, including Crestwood, uh, Crestwood, excuse me, Fox Ridge and Royal Glen. The applicant requested deferral from the August 13th Planning Commission meeting, so the neighborhood meeting could be held. There was a neighborhood meeting that was held on September the 6th. At the September 10th meeting, the Planning Commission further deferred the application to give the applicant another opportunity to have a second meeting. There were several people who were in attendance at that Planning Commission meeting that didn't know about the first community meeting that was held. A second neighborhood meeting was held on September 24th. It was a very well-attended meeting. I was present, along with the applicant and the applicant's design engineer. A lot of issues were discussed, the concerns that the neighbors had. In your agenda packets, you'll see that a number of the concessions that the developer has made, originally was a 1,600-square-foot minimum lot, or, excuse me, house size, was changed to 1,800-foot, as I was talking about earlier. The material for the homes being a minimum of 35 percent brick. There was also some concerns about people buying property with the intent of creating rental property. They put some information in there regarding that, as well as a prohibition in their restrictive covenants about parking on the street on a long-term basis. There's a few others in there I won't go through, but if you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this matter. I can answer any questions you may have this time, and we also have representatives of the project here that can answer them as well.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Demossi, before we have the public hearing? Okay, thank you then, sir. That being said, we will now declare the public hearing open for this rezoning request on behalf of Spring House Development. If there are those here that wish to speak for or against this proposal, now is your opportunity to come forward and make your wishes known. So, come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. I don't see anyone rising to speak for or against. Alright, that being said, the public hearing is closed, and now do we have a motion considering this particular application? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. I move to approve this rezoning request.
Second by Commissioner Farley. Is there any further discussion? And as part of that motion, was it, there were no staff directions in this regard? Is that correct?
It is correct, but... Whatever, basically, part of the approval would be with their, the revisions that they made to their plan development package, so that would just be part of everything.
Okay, so that's part of the motion, then. Any other discussion? All of you in favor of that, then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, that's very good. Next, Mr. Demossi, we have scheduled for a public hearing the new zoning ordinance and map.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. On behalf of the planning staff and the Planning Commission, I'm happy to present to you the proposed zoning ordinance and map for your consideration tonight. The ordinance and map before you tonight is the product of a process that officially began in 2009, although we were having community meetings even in 2008, and will replace our current zoning regulations that were originally adopted in 1984. The main goals of this process were to create a more modern zoning document, as well as to make it consistent with current state law. Both planning staff and the Planning Commission have spent many hours reviewing, amending, re-reviewing, and re-amending this document. I truly feel that this is the most important item that the Planning Commission or planning staff have ever brought before you. I would like to take a moment to thank all the people who, quite frankly, are too numerous to mention, who have made suggestions to us during this process. I believe their comments have made this document that you have before you tonight and the map a better document. Tonight will be the fourth public hearing we've held on this matter. We've had three at the Planning Commission. The first was on December 12th of 2011, and then we've had two this year, one on April the 9th, and one on April the 13th, again, both in front of the Planning Commission, and tonight's meeting would be the fourth. Since we made a more formal presentation during the joint work session between you and the Planning Commission on September 17th, I'm not going to go in any details into either the document or the map at this time. But please keep in mind that no changes can be made to either the zoning ordinance or the map from the floor tonight. Your options really are, you can vote it up, you can vote it down, or you can send it back to the Planning Commission for further study. If you do vote to approve the document tonight, we do request that you make both the ordinance and the map effective January the 1st, 2013. This will allow the two remaining zoning cases that we have to work through the system under the current regulations, and will allow us to start out the new year on a fresh note. With all that being said, I will be here for any questions that you may have, along with our Assistant Planning Director, Ms. Elizabeth Emsley, and also our Planning Consultant, Mr. Bill Terry. I'll be happy to answer any comments or questions you may have.
Any questions of Mr. Demossi, before we have the public hearing? Okay, thank you very much, then. Okay, we're going to declare the public hearing open for anyone that wishes to speak regarding the new zoning ordinance and map. So come forward and give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Chris Jensen. I reside at 2515 Lancoya Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. And I'm here tonight to represent the Rutherford County Home Builders Association. I'd like to start off by thanking each of you for the time and effort that you put into our community, and that I'll keep my comments short tonight. As Mr. Demossi mentioned, many hours have been spent writing, rewriting, and poring over this document that you have before you this evening, and policies were changed over the course of the project. I have stood in this spot before, in front of the Planning Commission, and spoke as to the anti-growth policies that originally were contained within the proposed ordinance, and as how it could actually hurt our county more than help it. But that is not why I'm here tonight. I'm glad to say that the Rutherford County Home Builders Association supports this proposed ordinance. We believe that ample changes were made and concessions were made where they were needed to be, to allow a zoning ordinance to be put forward to you that promotes a structured growth within our county. We do need more regulations concerning development of our county than what we have today. But the regulations that are needed are ones that will direct development and not hinder it. We feel that this proposed ordinance will do just that. The Rutherford County Home Builders Association urges you to vote for this proposed ordinance, which has been a long time coming. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, who would like to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? There is no one else that is rising to speak, so I have enough choice except to declare the public hearing closed. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. In your interest, that we've had over any number of public meetings before, I think shows the full and thorough discussion that we've already had over this, over two and a half years now, almost. Alright, we have the, a, the public hearing is closed. You have before you the new zoning ordinance and map, and what's the wishes of the Commission? Commissioner Phillips.
Mr. Chairman, I move for adoption.
And do we have a second?
Aye.
Second from Commissioner Jordan, Commissioner Allen, and others. Any other discussion, questions, or comments? Commissioner P.
I just wanted to mention, you know, this is not a perfect document, and there's some things that I don't necessarily agree with, but I think that even though we can't change anything tonight, anything that we put on paper here, we can change in the future, and we can tweak this as we see the needs come up. You know, I think it's time that we get this document in, you know, we need something better than what we've got, and I think that'll help prevent confusion and maybe future lawsuits. There's some things, like I said, I would still tweak more, but these guys put a lot of work into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner P. Appreciate that. Any other discussion? This is so important, I mean, I think a voice vote is obvious, but I'm gonna let you vote by electronic, so we can just, everybody can wish, vote their wishes. Okay, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty-one yes, motion passes.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a great day in the history of Rutherford County, and I just want to say thank you to all of you. I really appreciate your patience over this long extended period of time, especially our steering committee, our planning commission, and several of you are on that planning commission, so thank you very much. But really, sometimes we forget to thank our staff members, and Doug and Elizabeth and everyone in the planning department are to be given our show of appreciation for their diligence and their professionalism in making this really happen, and we look forward to working with this document, and just as Commissioner P says, we're sure that we'll have to make some changes, and they will all come back before this body, and we really appreciate your willingness to help us move forward. Thank you very, very much. Okay, we don't have a report from the Health and Education Committee. There is no report from Property Management Committee, nor there is no report from the Public Safety Committee. So we're moving right along for Public Works and Planning, and Commissioner Phillips will be before us with some resolutions here.
A resolution to approve naming of the bridge on Highway 96 East near Browns Mill Road, the Bill Martin Bridge. Be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recommend the bridge on Highway 96 East near Browns Mill Road be named the Bill Martin Bridge, and this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate state agency for consideration and action. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Mr. Black. Alright, any discussion on that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
A resolution to approve request to place a sign honoring Uncle Dave Makin on the bridge across Cripple Creek on the Old Woodbury Road near the New Kitchell Elementary School and forward to the state for its approval. Sign to read in memory of Uncle Dave Makin, the Dixie Dewdrop, 1870 to 1952. Be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners recommend a sign honoring Uncle Dave Makin be placed on the bridge crossing Cripple Creek on the Old Woodbury Road, Old Highway 70, near the New Kitchell Elementary School, and this resolution be forwarded to the appropriate state agency for consideration and action. Be it further resolved upon approval by the state of Tennessee of said sign, that the Rutherford County citizens requesting said sign shall be solely responsible for any and all cost for the same, including appropriate and approved signage, and that otherwise, the county shall not be responsible or obligated to post or pay for signage. The sign to read in memory of Uncle Dave Makin, the Dixie Dewdrop, 1870 to 1952. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner P. and others, I'm sure. But all of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
A resolution to approve temporary access easement for Lot 6 of Kingwood Trace subdivision. Whereas, pursuant to the private act authorizing the Rutherford County Highway Commission and Superintendent to work on public drainage easements and provide for the maintenance of public drainage easements, requires the county legislative body establish an official list of recognized public drainage easements. The attachment Exhibit 1 are the easements recommended by the Planning Department. And whereas, the Public Works and Planning Committee has approved the public drainage easements as submitted by the Planning Department. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county commission approves as additional public drainage easements the attached list, Exhibit 1, as submitted by the Planning Department, in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated 54-903 and 54-904. These public drainage easements, in addition to those previously approved, shall be the only public drainage easements which shall be worked upon by the Rutherford County Highway Department. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
And a second from Commissioner Turner. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next, on behalf of the Steering and Legislative and Governmental Committee, Commissioner Coggan.
Chairman, Commissioners, we have one resolution tonight, the Stevens Resolution. I'm just kidding. To approve amendment to Commissioner Handbook, Rule 4, Section A of the Commission rules. Whereas, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners desires to amend Rule 4, Section A of Commissioner's Handbook, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that Rule 4, Section A of the Commissioner's Handbook be amended to add, in beginning quotes, "the digest either by U.S. mail or electronically," end quotes, so that the affected paragraph will read, "The county clerk shall compose a digest of each meeting and distribute the digest by either U.S. mail or electronically, not later than five working days after the meeting. The digest shall be distributed as follows. Resolve this 15th day of November 2012." Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Stevens, second in motion.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Good job. Any other business that come before this body? Commissioner P. and then Commissioner Schaefer, I'm sorry, Commissioner Schaefer, I didn't see you. Go ahead.
There's a country ham breakfast this weekend at Kitchell Volunteer Fire Department. That'll be Saturday the 17th, from 6:00 to 10:00. Invite everybody out, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schaefer, and then Commissioner Turner.
Well, this isn't ham breakfast in Laverne this weekend, but tomorrow, from 11:00 to 2:00, at Laverne Senior Citizens Center is a spaghetti lunch. And it's on 337 Stones River Road, so if you're up in that area, please stop by. If you'd just like to make a donation, I got tickets right here for you. The second thing is, on December 8th, is when the Laverne's gonna be holding its Christmas parade.
Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to let everybody know, similar to what Commissioner Schaefer said, the Town of Smyrna's Christmas Parade is going to be on December 2nd, starting at 2 o'clock downtown, so we'd love to see everybody come out there and celebrate with us.
Commissioner Farley.
I want to make an announcement and congratulate a distinguished member of the 7th District, Mr. David Price, was a Cy Young Award winner. I want to congratulate him and his family for a job well done.
Yes. And I'm advised that the Murfreesboro Parade, Christmas Parade is December the 9th, and Commissioner Tiffany Phillips.
And the Eagle Parade is December the 8th, and that is my birthday.
December the 8th, and you can celebrate birthday with her on that day. Any other business that come before this body? If not, the meeting is adjourned.